Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen.
I'd like to call this meeting on Wednesday, June 22 of the Tallahassee City Commission to Order. We do have a quorum. Oh, we have everybody here. Fantastic. Give you all a second to come join us. We have a great meeting in store today. And as always, let me start this meeting off by inviting everybody from the public to please join us in setting the example of how government is done right and how civics can be done in a great and friendly manner. With that, let me go ahead and introduce the good Reverend Dr. Kim Buchanan of the United Church of Tallahassee, who will be providing our invocation. Reverend, thanks for joining us. Will you please stand? You're in a boot. I'm in a cast. We're making this incredible pair today. I hope you recover well.
That's right. You too. You too. Let's pray. Holy One, we call you by many names, Father, Mother, Allah, Great Spirit. Some of us, out of devotion, don't name you at all. Yes, we might call you different things, but we come today with similar hopes and dreams. All of us hope for opportunities for growth for our children. All of us hope for safe neighborhoods in which to live. All of us hope help for the natural world around us. All of us dream of a day when we can wean the meanness out of public conversations and speak to each other with respect even when we disagree. How grateful we are for this city, this Tallahassee community of which we are part. We pray for our leaders, for our mayor and our city commissioners. Grant them wisdom and courage as they engage in the important work before them today. And grant us all uncommon grace as we work together for the common good. It is in the collective hope for the common good of all of us who call Tallahassee home that we pray. Amen.
Amen. Ladies and gentlemen, our flag is to my right, your left. If you'll please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Reverend, thank you so much. We appreciate you starting our meeting well. Colleagues, I want to thank you for representing us at the grand opening of the skate park. Mayor Pro Tim, you did a great job today.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate you filling in for me as I'm slowly getting back up to full speed. We've got a great meeting ahead of us. Let's jump right in. Mr. Manager, do we have any agenda modifications?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, Agenda Item 9.02 has been pulled from the Consent Agenda and renumbered as Item 10.01.
Okay. Any other agenda modifications?
No, sir.
Okay. Colleagues, any questions on the agenda modifications? Moving on, do we have any presentations before us today?
No, sir.
Do we have any announcements before us today?
No, sir.
What takes this and input on the agenda items themselves? Do we have any appearances by other governing bodies, appointed boards, or committees?
No, sir.
All right. We are on the consent agenda. Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on the consent agenda?
Mayor, we do not, but I'd like to take the chance to make sure that we don't have speakers. All that I have at this point are unagenda items, and I just want to make sure people know that for this consent agenda, as well as the policy items, we'll take the speakers as the items come. But please fill out a speaker card if you're interested in speaking. And I'm going to guess that the mayor would say if you are interested in speaking on consent, we'll take you now and get the card after. But I don't know of anyone.
All right. So no speakers. Colleagues?
Move acceptance of the consent agenda.
Consent agenda has been properly moved by Commissioner Diane Williams Cox, seconded by the Mayor Pro Tim. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, 5-0. We have Item 10.01, the acceptance of the Florida Department of Juvenile Justice contract in support of the tempo program. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me ask Dr. Thomas to come forward in case there are any questions on this. And as you well know, in this past legislative session, the city was fortunate enough to receive $500,000 in the state's budget. That was up from a requested amount of $250,000, which is an unusual thing. This particular agenda item is actually the requisite step necessary to enter into an agreement with the Department of Juvenile Justice, as we did last year. Commissioner Williams Cox asked for this item to be pulled for additional discussion.
Excellent. Commissioner Williams Cox, let me check to see, do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
All right. You have the floor.
Thank you. I wanted to bring this forward because it is rare, and it's not easy to get money out of the Florida Legislature. And to get $500,000 this year, and last year, I believe, we got $250,000. I see a trend, and I wanted to pull this so that we could celebrate and talk about this with Dr. Thomas, who I give credit to, he and his staff, and under the direction of City Manager, Deputy City Manager, have been growing this program. And I was in a community recently, and someone said something about, we've only placed two or three people, and you don't get $500,000 from the Legislature by placing two or three people. So could you please shed some light on what this tempo program has been doing?
Well, thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. The program at this juncture, since its inception in 2017, we have engaged nearly 2,000 disconnected youth in this community. Half of those youth had had some offense with law enforcement prior to the program. Not one of those youth have reoffended or violated their probation. That is 0% recidivism. This program has placed nearly 300 disconnected youth in vocational or technical schools and college. We have nearly 200 graduates who have received their GEDs through this program. And I can tell you, probably one of the most crowning moments right now for me, as I stand here with you, is our Generational Poverty Stop Gap Initiative. And I want to introduce someone, if I may, very special. I have Case Manager Anthony James here, and I'm going to ask Ms. Washington to stand as well. Robin Washington's son and her partnered with the Generational Poverty Stop Gap Initiative. She saw Isaac and Cohort Four finish up last year. Ms. Washington has completed all her GED requirements. She will be getting her diploma on Friday night, and now her son gets to watch her receive her credentials. And my vision for them, that they will partner with other family members, and we will move them from generational poverty to generational wealth, they will be making the kind of funds with respect to what they want to do in technical certifications, that they can afford affordable housing here in Tallahassee.
Here, here.
What a crowning moment. And just very quickly, and I just got these numbers today. What just happened with Isaac, what just happened with Ms. Washington does not happen with building relationships through case management. Mr. James had done a fantastic job, not only with this family, but all my case managers do with their cases. They take personal interest in the lives and changing lives of every single participant in our program. And so here's our numbers for Friday's graduation. Sure you're ready for them?
Say it loud.
We have 67 participants who will be getting their GEDs, and 42 will be getting their technical certificates for a total cohort group of 121. So when someone says to me, those low numbers, I tell them to go down to 2525 South Monroe, roll up their sleeves, and let's do some sweat equity together. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Williams Cox, you're recognized for comments and a motion.
Graduation is Friday night at what time and where?
It's at 6 o'clock at the Old West Florida Enrichment Center on 2344 Lake Bradford Road.
And we're having how many graduates?
We will have 121 graduates who are receiving credentials, and at the same time, too, we have already a total of nearly 600 families of those graduates that would be in present attendance as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Williams Cox for motion.
Move acceptance of this, I can't even find the words, move acceptance.
Excellent. It's been properly moved for staff recommendation by Commissioner Diane Williams Cox, seconded by Mayor Pro Tim. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously. We're on Item Number 12.01, introduction of ordinance, Adam Attorney.
Item Number 12.01, introduction of ordinance Number 22-0-19, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, amending Section 6 of the Charter of the City of Tallahassee to next within the corporate area of the City of Tallahassee, Florida. Upon adoption of said ordinance, property being situated in Leon County, Florida, on Centerville Road, south of Interstate 10, in accordance with the voluntary annexation provisions of Section 171.044 Florida statutes, providing for separability, conflicts, and ineffective date, the recommended action is Option 1, introduce ordinance Number 22-0-19 and set the first and only public hearing for September 21, 2022, at 6:00 PM in the City of Tallahassee City Commission chambers at City Hall.
Excellent. Do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
All right. The recommended action is simply the introduction of ordinance, but the formalized that Mayor Pro Tim will make the motion for staff recommendation.
Move staff recommendation on Option 1.
Thank you. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
It's been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tim, seconded by Commissioner Diane Williams Cox. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, passes unanimously, 5-0. We are on Item Number 13.01. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item was initiated by you in your April 20 meeting. You requested staff to bring back an item to talk about the renaming, potential renaming of the Cascades Park Amphitheater, as well as a local street in honor of Julian Cannonball and Nathaniel Nat Adderley. Subsequent to that, that was on April 20, on May 10, the Leon County Board of County Commissioners approved a resolution expressing its support of the renaming of the Capital City Amphitheater in honor of the Adderley Brothers. The county staff and the county attorney's office have also reviewed the related interlocal agreement and agree that the county does not have any naming rights regarding the amphitheater, so it would be the decision of the City Commission. Additionally, as it relates to renaming a road, a street naming or renaming are under the purview of Leon County. That's for all local roads in our community. If approved today, staff would follow the prescribed process and submit a request to the county, through the county administrator, to rename a portion of what we recommend to be a portion of Swanee Street from South Gadsden Street to Myers Park Drive, and to rename it Adderley Way. That section of road is often gated off during special events, and has an immediate nexus to Cascades Park, and we believe would be appropriate to be renamed. However, given the county's policy related to street renaming, it does not allow for the renaming of portions of streets unless there's an exception or some logic to it. Therefore, it would require an exception by Leon County to the process. We do believe the recommendation has merit. We think that the connection to Cascades Park, where you would have the amphitheater named after the Adderley Brothers, and a street immediately adjacent to that named Adderley Way, has a lot of merit. So we recommend that you approve these actions, Options 1 and 2. They would initiate the renaming of the amphitheater in the honor of Julian Cannonball and Nathaniel Nat Adderley, the Adderley Brothers, what forever could be known as the Adderley Amphitheater, and then authorizing the, me, the City Manager, to communicate with the county administrator to initiate a renaming of a portion of Swanee Street adjacent to Cascades Park to Adderley Way. Ashley Edwards and Steve Schaefer are the leads from our departments on this, and they're here to answer any questions you might have.
Excellent. Do we have any public comment, Mr. Clerk?
No, sir.
Excellent.
Move Options 1 and 2 happily.
Second.
Mr. Mayor.
All right. And properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tim for Option Number 1. Option Number 2, the recommended action, seconded by Commissioner Diane Williams Cox. Any further comment? Okay. To maker of the motion, Commissioner Porter.
I just wanted to introduce in the audience this afternoon, representing themselves, and of course, the Adderley family, Mr. Scotty Bonheart, musician renowned from right here in Tallahassee, and with him is Mr. Lindsey Sargent.
Yep.
And want to thank them for coming out.
Yeah.
And Lindsey has been very instrumental in the success of the Florida Anam University Marching 100. He chose to stay here and be here for this rather than go to Paris. Thank you, Lindsey. Thank you all for coming this afternoon.
Gentlemen, thank you for coming. We certainly appreciate it and showing your support. Commissioner Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Was there a public comment on this item? I saw someone.
Someone came in after the item was taken up.
Okay. Okay. No comment for me. I just wanted to check.
Okay. Commissioner Williams Cox?
I absolutely wanted to weigh in and say how glad I am to support this, being the only rattler on the dais. I am pleased to.
I resemble that statement.
Well, you got the socks, too. Really. But I just wanted to let our musicians here know that we really appreciate how you're keeping it going. And I actually had an opportunity to speak with a member of the Adderley family recently at the National Alumni Association's convention that was held here in Tallahassee a few weeks ago, and I mentioned to her that we were looking at doing this. So I think it would be awesome for them to learn that this is another step closer to happening. So thank you all for this support.
Commissioner Matlow, and then the Mayor Pro Tim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mayor Pro Tim, for bringing this forward. It's just a really cool thing to be a part of today, one, just celebrating our history right here in our community, but also at such an important location where our entire community goes together. It's just a very touching tribute, and I think it just brings a lot of character to the stage in the park, as we really connect it with what that stage is all about, the musicians that have come, who've played today and have also come before us. So wholeheartedly support it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Excellent. Mr. Mayor Pro Tim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to request of the City Manager and staff that we, of course, design the appropriate signage so that everyone knows the action that we've taken today, and it's adequately represented at the site, but also that we have some type of recognition event, a ribbon cutting or something to, again, so that the entire community can be involved in what we've done here today and understand the significance of what we've done by this action.
I'm looking at our friends back there, seeing maybe you can help us put something together.
Exactly.
I think that'd be absolutely phenomenal. Seriously, let's talk about it. That'd be great.
Yeah.
I think it's a great idea.
Okay.
All right. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, item passes unanimously, 5-0. We are on Item Number 13.02. Mr. Manager?
Mr. Mayor, Item 13.02 and 13.03 are related, and if you would indulge us, we'd like to make the presentation in combination, but I'll ask David to come forward to do that.
Okay.
Before I get there, I would like to ask the City Commission to entertain a change in the recommended action. The action for both of these asks for the authority of the City Manager or my designee to negotiate and execute the agreements with the two respective parties. And since this agenda has come out, I've talked to our Inspector General, and we've had a good discussion, and he suggested, and he felt like it would make this a stronger process. I agree. If we separated those actions to where the City Manager or my designee would be given the authority to negotiate the agreement and to bring the final agreement in for approval to the Commission. I've talked to David, our Director of our Airport, who's on point negotiating these. From time to time, timing can be an issue. We know that there's going to be a gap in Commission meetings, but I think we can manage through that, and it works well. And with the Commission's indulgence, I would like to modify the recommended action for both 13.02 and 13.03 to bring the final negotiated agreement back to the City Commission for approval.
I think it's a great idea. Do we have any problems with that recommended action? Okay, no. Let's proceed forward. Now, when we get into the meat of it, let's present them as two items together, but we'll take the motion separately when the time is appropriate. Okay?
That'd be great, sir.
Go ahead, Mr. Manager.
And let me just make a few comments. David's got a presentation, and there's a lot packed in here. We know that our airport is an economic tool for our community. It not only gets us from here to other places around the U.S. and around the globe for that matter, but it also provides an economic catalyst for investment, and that's what we have here. Dave and his team have worked tirelessly to set the framework for that, to create the conditions where I think if the two items we'll talk about tonight are achieved, considerable investment in our community, as well as jobs that have a relationship to our airport and to take advantage of our airport, thousands of jobs and well over $100 million of investment made by private companies. So Dave and his team, along with a whole bunch of other folks, have been involved in this journey. It didn't start yesterday, and in fact, it didn't start at the beginning of the year. It's been going on for some time. And in 2019, they brought in for a landing a master plan that sets the framework.
No pun intended, right?
Yes, sir. Maybe it is intended. That sets the framework for, I think, the action today. And so I don't want to steal David's thunder in terms of the details, but we have what we believe to be two great opportunities. We still have to get to a final agreement and make sure it works for everybody, but I think we're well on our way, and this keeps the journey alive and the opportunity alive for the folks that we believe can locate at our airport. So just background comments, and I'd love David to share the details and seek approval from the Commission to continue on. David?
Mr. Paul, good to see you.
Thank you, sir, and thank you, Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, Appointed Officials. Very pleased to be bringing you these opportunities here today. It's important that we continue to have an eye towards the future. Some of you may recall in my previous meetings, I've talked about the five fingers, aging infrastructure and site readiness. We have to keep pressing forward as we continue to think about the future of aviation, the current capacity and demands that are being placed upon us, and the incoming interests that are, and opportunities that are presenting themselves to us here today. You go to the next slide, please. Okay. I'd like to start by just doing a rehash of our strategic priorities out of the airport because all these tie into these development opportunities. As we look towards the airport being an economic generator for not just this community, this city, this county, this entire Northwest Florida region, we've set the strategic priority as contained in the city's strategic plan to exceed a $1 billion annual economic impact by 2024. You may remember or recall that the latest FDOT study has us at a $599 million annual economic impact. We're also working towards a 1 million annual total passengers out at the airport. 2019 was a record year for us. We're approaching those numbers now as we've recovered from COVID. Certainly, the industry has got some challenges right now, the aviation industry, the airlines in particular. We continue to partner with them and support them and their efforts and show flexibility when and where we can, but we're continuing to work towards that. These proposals that are coming at us will certainly affect these next two very strongly, the first one there and these next two, the 22 million pounds of annual total cargo and then 100 acres of land leased. And as you know, we've broke ground on our customs facility on May 17. Item 13.02 is associated with Burell Aviation Tallahassee. Basically centers on three concepts, three main areas of development out of the airport, intermodal air cargo and freight distribution, maintenance, repair, and overhaul type facilities, and then additional general aviation facilities. You might realize that the airport, as it was relocated to its current spot years ago in the early '60s, these are a lot of the original buildings associated with that airport. What we're trying to do is look at our master plan, what's in the master plan, what's in our city's strategic goals and priorities, and see how we can find a higher and better use for the available parcels that are out there. Centers on this, we certainly have an eye towards the needs of the general aviation community. I always like to talk about the general aviation needs and additional facilities that they need, executive-style business hangars, if you think of that. And we certainly need to have an eye towards things like advanced air mobility and some of the other things that are coming in aviation. So the future is not too far out. As we look at the potential language in the agreement, right now, the conversation centers on a possible lease of a minimum of 32 acres, a capital investment of about $35 million, and approximately $14 million of new revenue to the airport over the course of that agreement and all. So right now, we're looking at a 30-year agreement and possibly a 10-year option, maybe two 10-year options, depending on the level of investment that is made, and our continued coordination with FAA and FDOT as they review, and we also have our city legal team reviewing, and also outside legal counsel that would be reviewing these agreements as well. In terms of economic impact, we would expect this would create about 738 permanent jobs, 433 temporary construction jobs, and have a combined total economic impact of $147 million to this community. What, where are we talking about? We're talking the north part of the airport. So we certainly have Flightline here. We would need to coordinate and partner with Flightline. We've had those discussions. They're certainly open to it. There needs to be ongoing discussions as we continue to move ahead through the lease negotiations. But these are the two main areas that we're talking about, the area directly to the north of the old terminal facility, as you may know it, otherwise called the Compass Point Facility. In terms of what it might look like, this is a concept that we've worked with Burell and Kim Lee Horn team here locally that's familiar with our airport, that understands the impacts of the roadway. So you'll see this diagram factors in the new roadway, which they just opened bids on on this section of, the state's opened the bids now, and we'll be working with them as they continue to track forward on the road widening project on the Capital Circle there, but also trying to have an eye towards those new facilities and the future demands of air cargo, freight, logistics, and distribution. A true intermodal-type facility combined with MRO aspects, things, maintenance, repair, and overhaul of aircraft, as well as an eye towards a lot of the GA community, those that have been in aviation for a while, they have an appetite sometimes to be able to, want to be able to drive right up to their hangar. So we've had an eye towards that as well, creating an internal roadway network where they could potentially drive right up to an executive-style business hangar, have some small office space, restrooms contained within, and then out into the hangar and the airfield As the City Manager made the modification there, that would change this slide here, so I'll pause there on this one here.
Excellent. Mr. Manager, any final comment?
No, sir. Would you like to discuss the Burell one, or you want David to continue on and then come back to this?
You wanted to present them in tandem, so do you want to go ahead and continue on, and then we'll open it up for questions and for public comment? Is that good?
Yeah.
Yeah. Why don't we keep on going?
Thank you, sir.
All right. Okay. So part two, total independent and unrelated, but designed to work together. This has been a huge puzzle for us, a very difficult puzzle for us. So as we continue to work with the different stakeholders and partners, as we continue to track ahead, our staff and the stakeholders and the development teams that we're working with have been very professional as we continue our discussions. I set up biweekly calls so that we can keep the conversation going and keep coming back at what some of the challenges, opportunities, and concerns are. In terms of Project Alpha, we would be talking, recommending a minimum 57-acre land lease. We would be talking about a potential $110 million investment in our airport in terms of capital investment, which would represent over $30 million of new revenue to the airport. In terms of economic impact, we would anticipate it would create 985 permanent jobs, 1,443 temporary construction jobs, and over $450 million total economic impact. In terms of where that might be and what that might look like, again, 57 acres directly to the north of the Burell Development would be 57 acres, and it would basically consist of three large facilities. You'll see, we just have them labeled as hangars. I would like to give you a little more detail on this one than what was contained in the agenda item. I did speak to them today. They did. item. I did speak to them today. They did give us permission to give you a little more because I wanted to give you a little more, and I asked them if we could do that. And so they certainly agreed. And so what we would be talking about is a state-of-the-art facilities, and I'm going to read this straight from a quote of a previous publication here. "State-of-the-art facilities will enable our companies to provide comprehensive, sustainable aircraft recycling solutions for aircraft owners, operators, airport authorities, and military services with a zero-waste mission to recycle 100% of an aircraft." Okay? And so this is a very, in terms of economic impact and sustainability standpoint, what they're proposing, you can currently recycle up to about 85% of an aircraft. And what they're really thinking about and looking at is moving that needle forward and potentially recycling up to 100% of that aircraft, as close as they can get to that. Does this look like an aircraft junkyard? Absolutely not. This is a clean facility, a very professionally-run facility, three different things. If you envision an aircraft that would effectively come in, land on our north-south runway, land to the north, taxi into, you shaded the purplish color there on Taxway Alpha, they would come into the facility, they would immediately drain the fuels, the liquids, the hydraulics, and strip that aircraft down, recycle all the parts, components, turbines, things of that nature, recycle those parts. And then they would also have an MRO facility that allows them to recycle and sell those parts, and then move forward to the paint and body shop that, or paint shop that would clean everything up if needed. Sometimes those recycled parts need touch-ups and everything else. So but with that, they would certainly be moving forward with that. We are working with Space Florida on this, Space Florida and our Office of Economic Vitality as well to piece this together, to secure the funding. It still has a ways to go. We still have a lot of negotiations, but I did want to get it before you so we could talk about it and have some discussion about it. So but we're very excited. We're very confident. We've been talking to them for a while as well, over a year. And so as we continue to press forward with that, again, our recommended action, as amended, would be to bring the agreements back before you. There would be several agreements in this case because we're looking at the possibility of Space Florida providing funding, a third-party, very reputable developer that would then take the funds and build it, and then ultimately an airport use agreement where we would authorize the use of that facility. And if it failed, working with Space Florida, those facilities, Space Florida would reassign back to us. So in terms of risk, there's not a lot of risk there because the facilities would revert back to us if it didn't work out in the long term. In terms of combined impacts, this is just a great slide. If you look to the far-right column, we're talking minimum land lease of 89 acres is where the discussions are at right now. Capital investment combined of $145 million, total of new and additional revenue to the airport of $44 million over the course of those agreements, creation of 1,723 jobs, creation of 1,876 temporary construction jobs with a combined economic impact of 597 million, which added to the current 599 million from the states, I get over my $1 billion annual economic impact. So with that, next steps in terms of, I guess, managing expectations, we would complete our negotiations, bring that back before you, let you take a look at it and highlight the key business terms and things that are within the agreements. We certainly need to be coordinating with FAA and FDOT. The longest lead time item, given the magnitude of this type of development, would be a full environmental assessment. That's going to take at least a year. And so we'll be working to accelerate these to the extent that we're able to. But, you know, they certainly gave us a heads-up that that could take a little while. So we want to build that in. We also need to factor in and evaluate airspace as we do with any project and buildings that are going up vertical on or adjacent to an airport there. Create those final design documents and begin construction estimated two to three years.
Excellent, David.
All right.
All right, let's take public comment on both items, and then we'll come back and questions and discussion and the whole nine yards. So folks, we're going to take public comment, we're going to, we're going to take these two items kind of together as they were just presented. So if you have public comment on both 13.02 and 13.03, we'd love to hear from you. 13.02 and 13.03. Mr. Clerk, start us off.
At this time, we have one speaker, Stanley Sims.
Mr. Sims, thanks for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Stanley Sims. Man, I'm at 1320 Avondale Way. I'm also the-
Mr. Sims, give us just a minute. I know that prior to the meeting that somebody indicated there was a problem with the camera, so I'm going to look around while you're talking and see if we've got that resolved.
All right. I'm the Executive Director of Help, Helping Entrepreneurs Leverage Prosperity. Mayor, fellow commissioners, this past weekend, I was given the delicious privilege to visit the National Black Art High designation. And I'm kind of ripped because that place is so sacred, and I encourage every individual to make that journey. Because I'm a graduate of Lucy Moten, I think about Dr. Easton. And when we get up to around sixth grade at FAMU High, it was no more for Black History Month, talking about Martin Luther King. Our teachers like Barbara Trueblood made us dig, and we would go up to Dr. Easton, Black History, he would give us some of the others. But my grandma raised me to say that all say to thine own self be true. And as I was approaching here, I heard this, we had to drive from Tallahassee to Orlando because of the flights. So I believe making us international would bring down the flight fares here in Tallahassee. But Commissioner Cox, I'm that somebody that might have told someone on the street that Temple ain't placing nobody. I might, let me own them. I might have been that one because her email, and it ain't just how I feel, it ain't how about they've treated my son. It's not how about Ms. Obina, who gets to this $200,000 letter, won't even return my son's call. But it's about, I did a public records request from the city of Tallahassee, asking them how many children had been placed from the first of this year to April 27, and they told me zero. I got it right here. And then I specifically asked how many been placed by Roe James, who is Greg's James' brother, who's got his foot on my neck. My son traveled that journey, just like our ancestors traveled that journey in that ship. And he got to the top.
Your time's almost expired.
And he graduated. But he didn't do it with the assistance of Temple. So can somebody ask Ms. Obina to promise to fulfill her promise she made to my son to give him a call? I know you don't like this. It's tight, but it's right.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have any other public comments on the agenda item before us?
Yes, sir, Mayor. I do have an additional speaker, Ramona Abernathy-Payne.
Okay. Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you for the opportunity. Ramona Abernathy-Payne, 2006 East Indian Head Drive. I think the growth at the airport is exciting, and I look forward to what it's going to bring to our community. I would just like to comment that as the plans go forward for designing additional access and especially flight plans, in consideration, the inside the, in the city neighborhoods who have been here a lot longer than the airport and don't start flying cargo over our heads at 4:00 in the morning. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment?
Mayor, I don't have any other speakers.
All right, David, stand by for any questions that might come. I'm going to start off by saying I am extremely excited about both of these items. I'd like to recognize and ask the members of the Airport Advisory Citizens Advisory Committee to please stand. And I see representatives from Flightline that are here as well. For the past two and a half years since we have restructured the Airport Advisory Citizens Committee, we have been envisioning how we can move forward and how we could take the airport to the next level. They have worked really, really hard, and I've been really proud to work hand-in-hand with them. This is what we've been dreaming of for three and a half years. This is the next step. And folks, you think about the fact that we just cut the, not cut the ribbon, but, you know, broke ground on the international facility just a couple weeks ago, and here we are with two absolutely incredible private investments out at the airport. This is the game changer. This is how we changed Tallahassee and Leon County with positive economic impact. This is how we changed the region on positive economic impact. This is exciting, and I'm really looking forward to taking the next step. Opening it up, any other questions, comments? Commissioner Williams-Cox?
Not necessarily a question. I want to join you in congratulating our airport and the advisory committee and other private investors. Let's not forget where the airport is located, on the south side. So we welcome the opportunity for these new jobs and opportunities for our locals to be employed in some of these opportunities, as well as to see how that the investment will keep our economy strong here in the city of Tallahassee. So kudos. Let's keep, let's put our foot on the gas, literally.
Excellent. Commissioner Porter, then the mayor, pro temp.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Congratulations, David, and everyone who's worked so hard on this. This is really exciting, and I was looking into Burell a little bit. And certainly, I mean, this is the kind of thing that for decades to come, you know, just with the changes in the way that people are purchasing and with COVID. And so it's really exciting to see. It seems like a totally, a perfect fit for Tallahassee and for our airport. I did have a question just to follow up to Ms. Abernathy-Payne. What kind of control do we have, if any, over that kind of thing with, you know, cargo going over people's neighborhoods at 4:00 a.m. as an example?
So, and I have talked to Ms. Abernathy-Payne, and I think I still owe her another phone call. But from the standpoint of, you know, those flight paths and things, the FAA controls the flight paths that come into an airport and into the runway. We certainly coordinate and communicate to the FAA regularly. There's all these different parts of the FAA. So we work with them regularly on things of that nature. I've conveyed her concerns to the FAA, and she's not the only one. So from the standpoint of this increasing traffic and those flight paths and, you know, the way I would like to be able to shift those over to the north-south runway where they're flying final approach on some of those later flights and all. We have our instrument approach into our primary east-west runway, which is directly in the flight path of where she lives. But from the standpoint of moving and potentially shifting operations, there are some things we can work with the FAA on. And so I actually have a conversation. I was recently out at a conference and talked to one of the higher-ups at FAA, and I'm scheduling a call to talk to a representative out of Washington on this issue. So from that standpoint, it's, yes, it's the development, it's the operational impacts, and certainly being, trying to be good neighbors as well.
Thank you so much.
Right. Mayor, pro temp.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. David, I want to congratulate you on the vision that you and the advisory committee have set for aviation in the city of Tallahassee. I remember when I came here 50 years ago as a student, what aviation looked like in Tallahassee. It wasn't pretty. And given where we've come from in that period of time, it's amazing. And where we're headed now, it's just phenomenal. And I know that this is just the beginning of where we're going to go, and we're going to become that international airport. And people won't be able to laugh anymore when we say that because it will indeed become true. I mean, this is going to be a phenomenal opportunity for us in terms of job creation, the economic impact that you talked about, $1 billion, billion with a B, annual economic impact. That's significant. And so I want to, of course, personally congratulate you all on that. Now, the one other issue that I did want to bring to your attention, and it may be an opportunity for us to coordinate again with Star Metro, there's been issues about transportation from the south side of town to the Amazon Center. And I know that Ms. Hendrich is looking, Baldwin, I'm sorry, I've got the Angela's wrong. I'm sorry, Ms. Baldwin, have been looking at establishing a route that would accommodate, you know, those individuals who might be able to get employed at Amazon to make sure that they have transportation if they don't have personal transportation. Well, we may be faced with that same issue with these two businesses at the airport. And so I was hoping that maybe we could get together with Star Metro and make some arrangements for making that happen as well, that there is transportation for those who might be employed at either of those two facilities that we somehow arrange for them. If they don't have personal transportation, that we make opportunities available for them for mass transit. And then also, you know, as you all know, I live on the south side of town. Ms. Abernathy-Payne, I've been there for 30 years now. I must sleep so hard, I don't hear the airplanes. They don't necessarily bother me. I haven't had my neighbors complain. But whatever we can do to accommodate those who are interrupted by that kind of noise, then certainly we should attempt to do that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Excellent. Any further, Commissioner Matlow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, I just wanted to thank the Inspector General for his astute comments and breaking this down and slowing it down and making sure we have all the information available. And thank you to the city manager for making that recommendation as well. I am going to save my compliments till it comes back, just because for that very reason, there was, when I'm reading the agenda item, we have about a page of information, and it just left me with a whole bunch of questions that I would need to have answered to support moving forward. So I'm glad the negotiations are going to be ongoing, and we'll see that before taking the vote. You started to answer some of your, my questions in the presentation, so I do appreciate that, but I'm just going to add them. So not to ask you now, but when we come back, just so we have a better understanding, and that it was how long of a lease term we were looking at for each project, what the price per acre per year we were charging was, how that compares to what other airports receive, or what metric we're using to value, come up with that value. If there are any adjustments over the years for inflation as we move forward, if it's a 30-year contract, and then are there any expenses incurred on the airports and throughout the course, either servicing the facility or other amenities that had to be provided to it. So those were my first, just some questions I needed answered, even though if this was a good, a good deal. I mean, certainly we appreciate the job creation. We appreciate the investment in our community, but just more information is always better. And then secondly, Project Alpha and stakeholders. You mentioned the recycling facility today, but we don't know who these companies are, per se. The public doesn't know who these companies are, per se. We're not an economic development agency. We're not offering an incentive. We're talking about a long-term, 30-year lease, and a part of my due diligence to support that. I would need to know exactly who we're talking about working with, what those deals are, who the stakeholders are. It's just, I can't vote for something that's going to have that long-term of an impact without answering those questions. And in conversations, I've had, the actual identity for a lease term isn't necessarily protected as it would be in an economic development agency. protected as it would be in an economic development agency. Is that correct, Madam Attorney?
Madam Attorney?
Thank you. So, the city uses disclosure agreements, and, and we try to protect if requested by the company. And so, but our agreements basically provide that it, it's still subject to the public records, and we can say what we will or would not agree to. But it usually comes first, and I think it was in this instance, that the company asked for that, is my understanding.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, just, just too many, too many challenges over the last few years with, with code names and the like to feel comfortable there. But overall, I know what you're trying to do at the airport, I, I know what the greater vision is in accomplishing it, and I look forward to supporting it. Just need all that clarity when we come back. Thank you, sir.
Certainly, Commissioner, and that's, and maybe I lumped them too broadly, but when I talk about that FAA and FDOT coordination, everything you just mentioned is, is part of that coordination. So, certainly, yes, CPI adjustments and level of investment and all that, so, but we're happy to bring that back to you.
Thank you.
Excellent. Again, David, job well done. This is a game changer for the community. This is one that we look back on in 20 years and say, I remember the defining moment when we decided to move forward. This investment in the airport is phenomenal. Great. So here's what I'm going to do, colleagues. We are first on 13.02, recommended action as amended. Is there a motion?
Move option one, Mr. Mayor.
Properly moved by the mayor pro tem. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Williams-Cox. Any further discussion on the motion on the table? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Excellent. We're on item number 13.03, recommended action as option number one as amended.
Move option number one, Mr. Mayor, as amended.
It's been properly moved by the mayor pro tem. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Williams-Cox. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're on item number 13.04.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item is a request to support the state of Florida becoming a member of the Southern Rail Commission. You'll, you'll recall, you discussed this at your April 6 meeting, and we've got a brief presentation to provide some background. Ultimately, if the commission, it's the commission's desire, it would be a letter encouraging the state of Florida from the city commission to participate. Thomas Whitley, our director of strategic innovations, here to provide a brief overview of this item.
Dr. Whitley, thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mayor, Commissioners. This item provides information that you requested at your April 6 commission meeting regarding the state of Florida joining the Southern Rail Commission. As you know, as the outline of the item, the Southern Rail Commission is the only multi-state rail compact formed by an act of Congress. Its current member states are Louisiana, Mississippi, and Alabama, and as a state that borders at least one of those states, Florida is eligible to seek membership. The Southern Rail Commission supports state departments of transportation, engages local governments, and encourages additional states to join, and then, on behalf of those states, pursues funding and planning for planning and implementing initiatives in those member states. The key initiative that I think is relevant to the state of Florida and to our region is the Gulf Coast Passenger Rail Project. I think we're familiar with that. It's focused on reviving passenger rail from New Orleans to Orlando, which you know was suspended after Hurricane Katrina in 2001. The Appalachia Regional Planning Council has sent a draft letter to localities in our region that can be sent to the Florida Department of Transportation, urging the state of Florida to join the Southern Rail Commission. Draft of that letter is included in your agenda item. At this time in our region, we're aware that the city of Quincy has sent such a letter, and we believe that Jackson County is in the process as well. This item seeks your direction, and we're here for any questions.
Excellent. Do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
All right. Yeah, so we send the letter. Commissioner Williams-Cox?
Mr. Mayor, I, I am glad that this is on our agenda. We've talked about this almost every CRTPA meeting about rail, because I do have a constituent who keeps me abreast of what's going on with, with rail, to the point that I've put him in direct contact with our rail resource. So, we are serious about reconnecting our rail system. So, I agree, I would make the motion that we would join by writing this letter, especially, obviously for opportunities to partner with Quincy. So, I, I think that we should, we should, we should join Quincy and Jackson County in, in providing this letter to join the Southern Rail.
I'll second your motion. Any, any other comment? All right. Motion's been made by Commissioner Williams-Cox, seconded by me. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. We are on item number 13.05.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor pro tem. Do you want to tee up that? Yes, sir. This is fairly straightforward. Our procurement director, Veronica McCracken, I'll ask her to come forward in case there are any questions. But we're seeking the commission's approval to award construction contract of the Pine Wood Drive Delta Office Park Stormwater Outfall to Towcon Group LLC, and authorize the city manager, my designated, to negotiate and execute that contract. Again, Ms. McCracken is our lead from our procurement department. She's also joined by Steve Schaefer, our general manager of Underground Utilities and Public Information. Okay. Thank you, sir. Mr. Treasurer Clerk, do we have any speakers on this item?
We do not.
Okay. Any questions? Is there a motion?
Move staff recommendation.
Okay. Motion is made by Commissioner Williams-Cox, seconded by Commissioner Porter. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, like sign.
Excuse me.
I'm sorry.
We have a comment down.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, that's okay. I just had a, a quick clarifying question for the city manager. It's, it's not about the, the bid area, the procurement. I'm just wondering, what steps do we take in determining, it was a structural failure in privately owned and maintained storm drain system? And I'm wondering if you could just give me some more background on how we go, so we're, we are now doing that ourselves, and it's going to be city-operated, correct?
Let me ask, thank you, Commissioner, let me ask Steve Schaefer, our general manager of Underground Utilities and Public Infrastructure, to help with that question.
Thank you.
Thank you, manager. Good question. Commissioner, this is a, a privately maintained storm drain that has been identified as something that causes storm during critical events, stormwater flooding in the area. We have looked at this as something that we can address through bypassing that structural defected pipe and creating a new outfall to John Knox Road.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so the motion passes 4-0. You are still out of the chamber when we...
I don't know if we actually voted. You didn't take the vote.
I think I got interrupted by the...
Yeah.
Well, I had carried the motion, but I didn't recognize, I didn't realize it. I thought you were raising your hand for the second, but, okay. So, let's just, did we carry the motion again, Madam Attorney?
I think you should take the vote again.
All right. So, the motion has been made by Commissioner Williams-Cox, seconded by Commissioner Porter. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries 5-0. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor pro tem. Appreciate that. Do we have any other business come before us at this time?
No, sir.
Okay. We have a public hearing at 6 o'clock, but it's 4 o'clock. I know that we've got some unengaged speakers that are here. Why don't we carry forward and listen to the unengaged speakers and go from there? Sound good, colleagues?
Good to me, yeah.
All right. Mr. Clerk, let's go.
Mr. Mayor, the first speaker is Erwin Jackson, followed by James Henry King.
Dr. Jackson, thanks for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Could those be handed?
And Dr. Jackson, you got to turn them in over there with the clerk. And you know we can't take...
Of course. No, 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 no.
Dr. Jackson, just put them down there.
It's political information. And before I go into why I'm wearing this and why I felt you needed to have one of those shirts, I want to first say that today is a very good day. Another nail in the coffin of political corruption has occurred. We're about ready to see our second mayor from Tallahassee go to prison. It's sad for the children and family members, but it's a step in the right direction, and I believe we're only about halfway there. The shirt, this shirt says, "Tallahassee Needs Registered Lobbyist." I'm sorry, Tallahassee's Next Registered Lobbyist. There's two people here, I'm not talking about the mini stripper, I'm talking about Scott Maddox. When he was out representing us in Las Vegas with his mini stripper, I've got nothing wrong with strippers, mini or large. He, as I've been told by my attorney, Scott, in prison, can go ahead and submit an application and become a registered lobbyist while in prison. Not only when he gets out. There's nothing that prevents this. Today, this issue's even more important, because we're going to have a second mayor in a few months, FBI works slow, maybe a year, who'll be looking for a way to make a living. We have to get as soon as possible a red, a light, a ordinance that puts limitations on who can become a registered lobbyist. I was getting a little bit aggravated. I've been talking about this for five or six months, government runs slow. So last week, I did, I hired an attorney, said if the city doesn't have time to write an ordinance, I'll just pay to have it written myself. So that's what I did, and I gave it to you. I think it's, the wording is very professional. I think that we should go ahead, and when someone fills out an application, that we do, we ask if in fact they're a crook, if they have a, a criminal background, but then we need to do a criminal check to make sure. Trust but verify. I also think in here that we should look at what other states are doing. For example, Connecticut, it's very simple. States here that if you're a felon, you shall not seek or accept employment as a lobbyist. Clear? No, it doesn't take long to, I mean, I can copy this, feel free to copy it. Matter of fact, that's what I put in here.
You have just a few seconds remaining.
Thank you. Let's look at Alabama, let's look at Alaska. A person may not register to be a registered lobbyist...
Sorry, your time's expired.
...if they have a felony charge.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson. Thank you, Dr.
Time to use common sense and represent the citizens of Tallahassee.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson. Thank you, Dr. Jackson. Our next speaker?
Next speaker is James Henry King, and then Adam Kay. James Henry King. We did have a couple who arrived earlier, and we're going to come back at the, at the announced hour of 6 o'clock, so if they're not here now, we'll call them again later at that time. Next speaker is Adam Kay.
Your name and address for the record, please.
It was Adam Kay, 726 East College Avenue. I'm here today speaking about the Holton Street Apartments, which are for sale and are no longer available for purchase as the call to offers was due yesterday. And so I submitted an offer in hopes that I can get it under contract with my partner, Christopher Daniels, in hopes that we can assign the contract to the city of Tallahassee, because these 100 units are block cement-built. The purchase price on them, the asking price is $8 million for 100 units, that's 264 beds. No time in the future will anything like this be available for the one-third of the reproduction costs that we can buy them for. What's going to happen, what they're being advertised as, is workforce value-add opportunity. What that means is, hey, out-of-town developers, you can come in, you can raise the rents, and you can force appreciation, and your investment will be worth more money. Currently, two bedrooms are going for $675, and that includes water and sewer. And they're currently renting out some of the units for $1,000. Luckily, these existing landlords are not bumping renewal rates up to market rates, but I can tell you at the $8 million purchase price, the new owners will. We are currently the only local individuals submitting an offer, and so I'm asking city officials is, can we do something about this, so we don't end up with another Florida Sun Estates tobacco? If we don't do anything about this locally, then people will be displaced. Obviously, you know, I am a capitalist, I'm not here just grandstanding, you know, I'm in the real estate business, and I can see the writing on the wall, and I do care about these people's lives. If for some reason the Tallahassee Housing Authority, given its current issues, are unable to receive these 100 units, and the city doesn't feel comfortable in purchasing these 100 units, which is, you know, not just, not just investment in affordable housing, it's an income-producing investment. If the city's not able to make their 544 units up to 644, well, I would recommend that there be some sort of local-led consortium, ideally led by Dr. Christopher Daniels or some other neighborhood-first type of group...
You have about 15 seconds.
...to acquire this property, to manage this property, to renovate this property, and make sure this is an asset for our community. Otherwise, we all know what's going to happen. And yes, we all speak about affordable housing, here's an opportunity to do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
Next is Robert Brown, and then Stanley Sims.
Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Robert Brown, just recently moved 3205 Allison Marie Court. I am here representing myself, as well as on behalf of Joma Works. We're an educational management consulting firm that's born and based here in Tallahassee. I've been here since 1997. What we do, we specialize in university and K-12 partnerships development. We've generated millions of dollars in grants and program funding for schools and districts and communities, not just only here, but also across the country. This summer, we're launching a IFC Health, which is a men's support and advocacy, advocacy program with the mission to support men, but specifically targeting black men who are going through transition. Basically, to help provide physical, mental, and emotional journeys in support through their family-related illegal potential issues that they may arise. And we challenge to promote individual and family and community health, that's what IFC stands for. Individuals will enroll and complete an initial eight-week learner center course designed to provide skills and effective strategies for promoting individual, family, and community health. And after completing the course, participants will also receive a $2,500 stipend. An ongoing support, technical training, and just a listening ear for them to have somebody as a support system for them as they go through their long journey. We're asking for your support in launching, and more importantly, sustaining this critical and innovative program. As Tallahassee, as, as a Tallahassee resident, community and, and a business, business community member for nearly 20 years, I've seen the need for structural support for men, specifically black and brown men. Fathers, and as we navigate through the family court system, specifically, we would like to see the city of Tallahassee formally endorse IFC Health through an MOU that can be used to generate support for national, state, and local foundations, and enable schools, Tallahassee legal community, and local funders to show this support. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
Stanley Sims. He'll be followed by Trish Brown.
Great. Name and address for the record, please.
This time, I'm Stanley Sims, husband, the father of two black children at 1320 Avondale Mayor, my grandmother told me one time, what make you laugh or make you cry. And it was just very disappointing to watch the giggles of this mayor's demise, former mayor demise. That's not civil. That's disrespectful. Ye without sin cast a first stone. Ye without sin cast a first stone. God knows I don't have any room to laugh at anyone. If I would have done that, I wouldn't have gotten a laughter. Reese would have been nodding there to the chief to go call Mo, my team officer. Let's get real here. My baby graduated. None, zip, zero, nada, no assistance from tempo. Now, I didn't lie. If I lied, I lied based on information that was given to me by HR. Now, from April 28th to now, they've reached 2,000 people? My grandmother used to tell me, because I would always tell the truth when I got in trouble, she said, "Baby, no matter how bad things are, you tell Grandma the truth because the truth I can work with." But I can't work with a lie. You tell me the truth, no matter how ugly it is, because the truth we can deal with. But a lie? I'm that somebody. And the reason why I'm that somebody is because I'm getting it from HR. So evidently, the data that he is giving you all is not being transferred to HR when people do public records requests. Or is this not just about jobs for our kids? Or is this about no job for a kid whose last name is Sims?
You have 30 seconds.
When I walked that ship with tears in my eyes, because to me, it wasn't a museum, it was a ship. That ship was iron, and it's still sailing.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please. Ms. Brown, your name and address for the record, please.
Trish Brown.
Thanks for joining us.
I always do that. Again, I'm Trish Brown. It's good to see you all. I have an organization called Power Up People, and I do a lot of advocacy work here in the community. And I definitely focus on disaster aid, and I also focus on Congolese refugee immigrants and other African immigrants in this community. The reason why I came today is because a lot of my folks, my families, our families, our refugee immigrant families, they live over in Holton Street Apartment Complex, and I know that that apartment complex is coming up for sale. And my thing is, is that I don't want to see my babies, I mean, our babies, our children being kicked out there into the streets. And I know that, like, folks want to, like, purchase, real estate-wise, the complex, but my thing is, is that I'm asking all of y'all to talk to me once this is all over. Talk to me about doing a land trust with the Holton Street Apartment Complex. You all know that the land trusts will do this and that, is that it'll provide low and moderate income for people with the opportunity to build equity through home ownership and ensure these residents are not displaced due to the gentrificationing and the capitalism, you know, profiting off of poverty impacted marginalized, you know, people. So I'm asking all of you, because like I said, I've heard, like, frivolous things, like, come up before for you as far as, like, y'all have addressed. This is serious, this is life and death. As far as, like, in the Holton Street Apartment Complex, they're already living like it's in their rural country. They come from, like, an area of Congo where there genocide, and now they're, like, being dumped into these, these projects. And they're living just as badly as they were in your own country. I go into these homes and I see how they're living, and I see the mold and mildew, I see broken doors, I see no stoves working, I see no fridge working, I see roaches, I see, I see rats, I see all of those things. And I see our children getting sick, and I see, and the reason why the parents aren't here is because they're out there working like slaves right now to try to, like, keep a roof over their head, and they're paying top dollar because they're not on Section 8, and Section 8 is endless.
You have about 15 seconds.
So I'm asking y'all to connect with me because I believe that a land trust is better in regards to our folks benefiting from that, prospering from it, building their credit, providing a source of equity that will, like, uplift them in our communities instead of people continuously making money off of them.
Thank you.
So if this is serious, and like I said.
Thank you.
They came with me here today because they want to keep their home, and they want to not be kicked out there into the streets.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
You should be saying thank you to them.
Thank you.
Because they came here too.
Appreciate everybody.
To address this as well.
Appreciate everybody coming out.
So I hope y'all reach out to me after this is over because this is serious.
Ms. Brown, thank you, your time is up. Thank you. Our next speaker, please. Daniel, good to see you. Enjoy serving on the city's Assistance Advisory Committee with you.
Absolutely, absolutely. So just my name, Christopher Daniels, 704 Robert and Trudy Perkins Way, one of our, the coolest streets in Tallahassee, for sure, for sure. So, you know, here today to talk about a lot of things, but before I get into it, I want to applaud everyone for what's been done so far, right? A lot of times in public service, we don't get the gratitude, you only get the kind of backlash, right? We've done a phenomenal job in this city, right? I think a lot of people don't really realize how progressive Tallahassee is, how much effort has been made, how much has been done compared to other cities, right? We've done a lot of work, I'm tremendously grateful for the work that's been done in Bond, we've renovated so many houses, new sidewalks, many things, and there's been so much progress done just from people in the housing department, just all the different avenues throughout the government have done a phenomenal job making our city a better place, right? And I think that we're one of the cities that's best positioned to kind of deal with a lot of these issues that we have because at least we have a consciousness and a care for affordable housing, whereas a lot of places don't, right? I mean, if you go down south, those people are being thrown to the wolves, right? I mean, you go in certain parts of Miami, other places like that, I mean, you can't even find a house under $400,000, right? You can't find any rent less than three grand. I mean, people have been just slaughtered throughout the state of Florida, but at least here in Tallahassee, we have been able, I mean, we still have our issues, however, because of forward-thinking, a lot of action-takers within our local government, we've been able to make things a lot less worse than they possibly could have been, right? So with the particular issue, when it comes to apartments on Holton Street, we really just wanted to bring it to the table and start a conversation, right, about what possibly could be done, right? So with deals, with apartment deals and commercial real estate deals, there really isn't a lot of time, right? So for people unfamiliar with the process, they put it out, they put a deal out there, it's unpriced, you have to figure out how to value it, all these things that have to happen, and then you have, like, 48 hours to make an offer, right? So there's not enough, there's not much time to go call everybody and have a roundtable discussion about this and that, so you kind of have to act fast. And sometimes when you act fast, you act in haste, and maybe you do things that maybe shouldn't have been done, or things were said in a way they shouldn't have been said, but at the end of the day, the intent is always good, right? The intent is to start a conversation about how can we take, how can we keep our community access within the community? So in this particular situation.
You're at 30 seconds.
In this particular situation, you know, we only have one local bidder for this property, which is myself and Adam, and we, you know, we're competing against California hedge funds, billionaires from whoever, wherever, place like that. So what we're asking for is how can we get some help from the city so we can keep this property affordable? I really enjoyed the speaker that came previous, before me. I actually am currently housing two refugee families in my apartments on Palm Beach Street and one on Holton Street, and I have another one, another one moving in to an apartment I have on Dunn Street. So we have that same, we have the same vision for the community, right? I think it helps with diversity, it helps with a lot of other things, it helps bring vibrancy to the neighborhood, and I think there's a lot of things.
Your time is expired.
Sorry to run over time, but I really just want to bring this conversation to the table.
Appreciate it.
Thank everyone for their time.
Thank you. Our next speaker.
Mayor, let me check and see if James Henry King is here. Oh, there we go. You're the next speaker then, and that's the last speaker I have at this point.
Mr. King, thanks for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Jim King, 6650 Havana Highway. I can't vote for any of you, sorry. Thank you for voting on the rezoning unanimously, I appreciate that. June 2019, I presented the legal case for building on now my parcel with the utility easement. Responding, Mayor Daley told me I'm a Tallahassee institution and directed Goad to get this done. Days later, McGara insisted no structure was permitted. Mr. Goad reeled him in. McGara said OSHA required 10-foot clearance from the poles, a doubling. He misled three times about the complexity of moving one set of lines. I sent pictures proving my words. August 2019, month later, McGara cites an OSHA rule requiring 25-foot pole clearances, a 500% increase, confiscating 18,000 square foot of property, and another lie. The OSHA rule is only about derricks and cranes. September 2019, McGara directs Culver House of Real Estate Division to buy the property out from beneath me. September 8, 2020, met with Mr. Goad, McGara, and Ash, and said, "Due to the confiscation of the entire parcel, withholding requested information for months, profits lost due to shenanigan delays, incorrect answers causing time-wasting goose chases, bogus OSHA rules confiscating more land, and trying to evict me by purchasing the parcel, I ask the city of Tallahassee to bear the cost of the power line rerouting, or at least offer a payment plan." Mr. Goad responded, "No, that's just the process." A week later, McGara sends me a new rewire option to, for, to move, send the wires to two poles over to Thomasville Road, Financial Plaza, Thomasville Road, for $40,000 and change. May 19th, then I went through the whole rezoning for last year, I'm almost done. May 19th, 2022, utility engineers my pre-submitting application with no structure permitted on the property.
You're at 30 seconds.
Now 30 feet from conductors. The price to underground from one pole to the next is $72,000 on my property, $40,000 to go to the next one, like, $40,000 to go too wide, 600 feet, 300 feet, $40,000 for a shorter thing. My parcel rezoning is completed, but now I can't do anything with it, according to utilities. Five quick questions. One, what happened to Get It Done? I bought the property based solely on the mayor's directive.
You're at three minutes.
I need in writing the city's acknowledgement of my ability to legally erect a building on the property. Undergrounding from the pole at Financial Plaza to Thomasville Road is $40,000. Why is undergrounding one-third the distance, materials and labor? Why is that $72,000? Simple math says it should be around 13. FEMA can underground a mile for $26,000, or about five grand to do that job. Utility wants $72,000 for 200 feet. Four, may I have a 10-year payment plan or a lien for option two for the rewiring? And that's really my questions.
Great, appreciate it.
That's it? No answers to my questions?
This is time for your public comment, to be able to speak to us, but the manager's sitting right here, and I'm sure as soon as we gavel out, you can have a conversation with him. Thank you, Mr. King. Do we have any other public comment?
Mayor, I have no other speakers at this time.
All right. Colleagues, it's 4:27, we have a public hearing at 6 o'clock, we'll gavel into recess, we'll be back at 6, and we'll go from there. Sound good?
Sound good.
We have a public hearing scheduled for today, right now. We have two items on the public hearing, 15.01, 15.03, excuse me, 02. So, Madam Attorney, you want to walk us through the public hearing?
Thank you. Item number 15.01 is the first and only public hearing on Resolution Number 22-R-19, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Tallahassee, Florida approving the local housing assistance plan as required by the State Housing Initiatives Partnership Program Act, subsections 420.907 through 420.9079 Florida statutes, and Rule Chapter 67-37 Florida Administrative Code, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute any necessary documents and certifications needed by the state, authorizing the submission of the local housing assistance plan for review and approval by the Florida Finance Corporation, and providing an effective date. The recommended action is option one, conduct the first and only public hearing and adopt Resolution Number 22-R-19, approving the city's 2022 through 2025 local housing assistance plan.
Clerk, do we have any public comment?
No, sir.
Commissioners.
Move acceptance of recommendation.
Been probably moved by Commissioner Williams Cox, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Porter. Any further comment? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously 5-0. 15.02, Madam Attorney.
Item number 15.02, first and only public hearing on the adoption of the 2022 through 2023 HUD Action Plan. Recommended action is option one, conduct the first and only public hearing on the adoption of the 2022-2023 HUD Annual Action Plan, approve the submission of the plan to HUD, appropriate the associated funds as proposed, and authorize the city manager or designate to execute the pre-award contracts for the related activities and programs.
Excellent. Do we have any public comment?
No, sir.
All right. Commissioners.
Move acceptance of African nations.
Second.
Been probably moved by Commissioner Diane Williams Cox, second by Commissioner Porter. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously 5-0. Do we have anything else coming before us at the public hearing?
No, Mayor, thank you.
Excellent. Let's go back and give everybody an opportunity, just in case they came here at the 6 o'clock hour to speak. Do we have anybody that wishes to speak on un-agenda items? Un-agenda items, anybody here that would like to speak on un-agenda items? Mr. Clerk?
I have no names at this point.
All right. Last call, un-agenda items. Okay, let's move on with the sharing of information. Who wants to start us off? Commissioner Williams Cox.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have just a couple of things. First, I want to congratulate our own chief for going up there and reforming the FBI. Graduating with honors, I understand, and he's back with us, and we're just glad that he's, he's back and bringing all that knowledge here to help us continue to fight crime here in Tallahassee. So congratulations, chief.
Good job.
The next item on, the next item that I have is, city manager, a few, maybe a couple of weeks ago, we were talking about the Commissioner Billings, the Greenway, and there were some conversations that had taken place with Ashley, I don't know if she's still here, and a citizen regarding what to do and could we possibly name something other than what had been designated after our Commissioner Billings. So Silver Lake, I think, was what was part of that conversation. What do we need to do to move forward with that?
Commissioner. Mayor. Thank you, Commissioner. So the process is not hard and fast, where you run it through your advisory committee, but it's recommended. So let me give you a little background of what you're talking about. We know there's a future potential Greenway, part of our overall Greenway master plan process, that would be named after former Commissioner Billings. We know that's more long-term, and then there had been discussions about, Delatory Hollinger is a local- And then there had been discussions about, Delatory Hollinger is a local that many of us work with and know. He had suggested that Commissioner Billings be recognized. It came up in conversation with our Parks and Recreation Director that Silver Lake was not, it was named Silver Lake, but that was not like an official designation. And maybe there was potential to name the Silver Lake Park or something to that extent. And that would be something that was much more immediate and could happen at the direction of the City Commission. That's where it stands. We don't have direction on that. But if I could make a recommendation, I think a process that might work well and has engendered a lot of support in our neighborhoods. We know the parks in our neighborhoods are very near and dear to those that live there, you know, the entire community, but those that live closest to the parks. The process that we normally go through, so the policy process that we go through in the renaming of parks, starts with letters of recommendation, ideally those that are engaged and have the greatest connection. I think if we've traveled that, even an abbreviated process, where those interested, certainly we could work with Delatory on this, to kind of initiate that, travel through the process, get feedback from the neighbors, and bring a recommendation to the commission. With the City Commission's direction, we could begin that as early as tomorrow, and I think that would be a very productive process. So Silver Lake, so again, Silver Lake could be named. It's not named after somebody, so you wouldn't be redoing that or undoing that. And I think we've got a good process in place that would be able to test the, you know, the feedback of the local community and get that buy-in as well.
Okay. Well, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we do just that.
Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously 5-0. You have the floor, Commissioner.
Okay. Thank you. Madam Attorney, I'm just coming down the line. Madam Attorney, we talked about an agenda item dealing with what we should do with lobbyists who have gone astray of the law. And you were doing some research for us about bringing an agenda item back. What is the earliest you think we could get that agenda item brought back to us?
Your direction, I can bring it back the next meeting on the 13th, or I can bring it back right after your break, whatever you prefer.
Okay. With the support of my colleagues, I'd like for us to bring it back at the next meeting. And so if there's something else that we need to do, we can, we'll have the break to consider doing it. So if, I don't know, do I need to make a motion? If so, you know, to bring an agenda item back, we did agree to that. So if we can bring it back at the next meeting, let us know where we are and what are the next steps.
Absolutely. We've definitely completed our research. We've looked at the jurisdictions. We see what is generally out there. Just to summarize, you know, what I'm seeing is if you're doing a permanent ban, you know, that is not really the way that most states go, but it is done, and it usually is anywhere between three and 10 years. So we can bring that back and...
In a conversation today with my good friend, Dr. Jackson, I think that he is one of the ones who's kind of been driving for this information, as you saw today. And he, I'm going to share some information with you as a part of your research for bringing back, that he shared with me today, to let you know kind of where he's, what he's thinking, if that's okay with you.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. All right? For the floor?
Florida A&amp;M University, y'all have heard of them. They're in Paris. The Marching 100 is in Paris. And they will be performing this week, tomorrow, I believe it is. But they'll be coming back to Tallahassee at our airport on Friday. They're coming in groups of two. There's a small group coming at 7:50, and then there's the larger group coming at 11:50. I want to encourage all of us who can in the community to, let's go back, go to, go out and greet them and welcome them back from Paris. And I want to thank our communications department, who is going to help provide signage out there to welcome them back home. And so I plan to get out there, if I can stay woke that late, to welcome them back home. So I want to encourage you all to join me there. Thing on the South Side, Capital Park Baseball, y'all probably heard about them as well. You know, they went to the World Series last year. But guess what? Capital Park is on their way back, the 13, 14-year-olds are on their way back to the World Series. And I think I have a picture of the baseball team because they just won, they beat Meridian 14-4, and Tom Brown 3-2, I think, something along those lines. But these are the young men who will be representing the city of Tallahassee in Mississippi in July in the Disney Dean World Series. As you recall, they went last year, and they're going back again this year. Of course, they're going to need some help funding this trip. So when they ask us for a donation, don't run, don't hide, pull out our checkbooks, Cash App, and PayPal, and let's help them get there to represent the city of Tallahassee. So congratulations, Capital Park Baseball, 13, 14-year-olds. And last but not least, again, I want to thank the communications department. I think we have a graphic of this as well. Y'all may have seen this in the back. I am a fan, I am very fond of charts, because charts take words and condense them to pictures and numbers. And we've been asked, Blueprint Board has been asked, what did we get or what do we get for the funds that were given to Doak Campbell for the safety enhancements that they're doing from the economic development? Well, I'm glad you asked. This handout will share with you, based on the executed, already executed memorandum of understanding what Florida State has agreed to, what the city of Tallahassee and Leon County has agreed to do on behalf of those dollars. Because as I've said many times in the meeting that myself and Deputy City Manager Cynthia Barbara had with Dr. McCullough, public dollars equal public access. So here are, here's what is going to actually come into our community as a result of that. And let me just quickly point out a couple of those things, starting at the bottom, free and subsidized tickets to events and venues for up to, tickets for up to 100, not just for youth, but anyone in the community. And those arrangements will be worked out between the city and the county with FSU, as well as, as you see in the middle of the page, you know, minority women and small business enterprise will also be used to do some of this work. Tempo is a part of that, and Aspire. You all may not remember Aspire, but we funded Aspire, that's going to help some of our locals get opportunities to attend college. And at the top, the emergency management, they're continuing to be our partner in emergency management in event of a hurricane or the need to do staging there, as well as the neighborhood medical clinic that's already over in Mayberry Manor. And they are part, they partner with us on our renewable energy initiatives in regards to the electric buses that they contracted for. So, and the crowning piece of it is that the funding that was provided will sustain and maintain 1,200 full-time jobs. So here we have it, and it's not in black and white, but it's in blue and white, and purple, well, blue and white. And this is what the community gets for what we did. So to answer those questions. And you're already familiar with our other charts. If you're not, they're on the back table back there. Take them home and take them to parties and talk to people about them, take them into the community. I've actually gone into the communities and had meetings, community meetings, explaining this, because there are lots of folks who don't know what's happening, and we're, and I feel it's our job to make sure that they know. So that's all that I have. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, colleagues, for your support in all that we do. Thank you very much.
Great. Who wants to go next? Mr. Malo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, I want to thank Blueprint for letting me on a skateboard and not having to sign an injury waiver. But congratulations, Ms. Calder, great kickoff today. Second, from public comment earlier about Holton Street Apartments. If we don't do something, we know what the result's going to be. We've seen it across our community as people come in and purchase the last of affordable housing for people of an income level that's low or very low. It's rapidly depleting. We saw the news today about Orange Avenue, the reduction of 34% of public units and the impact that that may have. I don't feel like if we don't take action, nobody will, and we're going to bear the consequences when these units are no longer available, not just here, it's going to happen all across our community unless we start to be very, much more proactive in deciding how we can keep rental stock in our community that's actually affordable for people who aren't on Section 8 housing, who aren't getting subsidies but are working every day. It's a hard issue that we face all across our community, but I know that there are things that can be done. I know that there are things that we can do. We know that the most successful programs in the history of our country for housing for low-income individuals has been public housing. When we open wait lists, we get thousands and thousands of people who apply because of the success of that as a last resort. I know the timing on this project isn't convenient, and I don't know if it's this project or we need to look further out of how we do this, but I don't think we should move forward without trying. If we don't try to see what we can do in the next few weeks, the months, because we know what's going to, we're going to be experiencing it in six months to a year when people are getting evicted. That's going to put strain on all of our service providers to try to help relocate them. And as we just learned, there's not a whole lot of places for people to relocate to. So what's going to happen to those individuals and what we could do? So what my ask is, or my suggestion would be, is to give the city manager the authority to meet with the folks on Holton Street, look at what's possible. Is there a partnership that can be created with us? Is there a partnership that can be created with the housing authority? Give us all the options on the table to see what we can do to preserve these 100 units. And I'll make a motion and then bring back an item in two weeks, letting us know what we found. And I'll make that a motion.
Second.
There's a motion on the table to provide the city manager the opportunity to go sit down with Holton Street Apartment Complex, Tallahassee Housing Authority, yes, anybody and everybody.
Yeah, I would say the owner of the complex and Mr. Daniels, if they have some, whatever role they play, I would add the community member, all the community members that spoke from the complex as well, just go see what's out there.
Thinking about Commissioner Porter. Thoughts, comments? Commissioner Williams-Cox?
I don't see where we have to give the city manager the authority to go meet with some folks. I think that he can go meet with them anyway.
On point. I'm requesting an agenda item to come back with possible solutions.
Okay, 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 okay. I just want to be clear. Okay.
Mayor Pro Tim?
Well, I tell you what I'm, I am not in favor of is the city getting into the low-income housing market. I am very much aware of the need in the community, but I just don't know of a municipality anywhere in the country, and my aide has done some research on this, where the municipality has taken the lead in terms of providing low-income housing. That is typically done by housing authorities, and we have one here. I am very impressed with what Mr. Daniels is doing, particularly in the bond community. And so I would look to our private sector. We have some partners that we're, we partner with, Tallahassee Lenders Consortium. And so if we're going to have this meeting of the minds, those would be the kinds of agencies and individuals I think should be involved in this. But I certainly would not be personally, at this point, interested in the city of Tallahassee moving forward with being the provider of, because we do have partners in the community, I think, that can do that. But in terms of a meeting, I'm 100% behind that and recommendations coming back in a couple of weeks as to what we can do to make sure that this housing is preserved in our community for those who are in need.
Mr. Manager, would you like to weigh in?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. I think it'd probably be helpful, let me ask, Abena, I think we need to provide context on the situation we've got. So Mr. Daniels and Mr. Kay indicated earlier, they've made a proposal to buy the complex. Abena, I'd like her to share, we know about this particular apartment building, it is not an income-based rental today. That's not the case. We know it was in poor shape, and I think, I think it's been suggested that it has been put out to bid by the sellers. And so I think it's probably helpful for this conversation, for you to know that. I don't think we need to wait for the July 13th meeting to share that. And then how that kind of process can play out. Now, Mr. Daniels and Mr. Kay indicated that they've made a proposal on it, so I think that that's got to play itself out. So if they've made a proposal, we'll see if they're successful. They may be able to control the outcome of it by being the owners and then determine that they want to make it an income-based apartment complex. What we do know and what we've shared, and I think, you know, all the updates that we should continue to have, is we have 1,900 units in the pipe that are income-based. So there's, they don't have to be part of the Tallahassee Housing Authority's system. So we know the housing authority is the housing agency for our community, the Tallahassee Housing Authority. We know that. They're organized through HUD. That's how housing agencies are organized around the United States, and in particular in Florida because of the way we're constitutionally organized as local governments. So we know that, but they don't have to be part of that system. The 1,900 units that are coming online, they're income-based, that's what it means. So they, so you may not even receive a voucher from the Section 8, like we talk about. You may not be living in a housing authority complex, but you can only rent at, based on your income, and those rents are, you know, associated with your incomes. And so there's lots of options. There's options for investors like Mr. Kay to buy apartments, like we're talking about, and have them qualify for income-based. What that entitles you to is a whole variety of incentives, federal incentives, state incentives. You've made policy decisions. You've taken action as a CRA to incentivize. You don't buy complexes though, because you're not politically organized to do that, and you don't have any revenue source. So there's lots of creative ways. And what we've seen is we know we have more, we have more affordable housing units coming online today than we've seen in 50 years. And so we know people are interested in investing in Tallahassee. That's disproportionately high for Tallahassee. That's a good thing for Tallahassee. And each and every one kind of has its own story, and they're, you've seen the maps, you guys have seen the maps. These apartment, they're typically apartment complexes, they are literally throughout Tallahassee. They're not concentrated in the South Side only. You just approved an item at a meeting or two ago regarding some bond financing for one that's in the Northeast Side of town. So we see these taking different shapes. I think there's opportunities. What I heard earlier was that potential opportunity, if we have local folks that are investors and operate housing already, those opportunities exist. Certainly, we could talk about that. I mean, those are, you know, good things to talk about. But I think it's helpful, and, and, so I wanted to give the broad brush, this particular apartment complex, not to be confused with a neighboring complex Leon Arms, today isn't income-based. So they can rent at market rates, and they're renting at prevailing market rates based on the conditions, which are not in good shape. And so, Mr. Mayor, if you wouldn't mind, I'd like to just make sure we give a little bit of context here, and then the discussions going forward, you know, we know what's in the pipe, we know the different projects that are playing out. How does this one fit in? And how do the investors that have talked to us tonight, how do they fit into that? And could they get into this income-based housing? So, Abena, will you add some more context on this particular one?
Sure. And you did a great job really giving us a broad view. As you know, we work with many different types of partners that come to the table with various requests for incentives, and you have taken some really good action that gives us some tools in the toolkit. And so we, I want to make the distinction between what the programs that the city usually supports and the distinction with public housing, which is operated by our housing authority, and they are the entity by Florida statute that is empowered and funded to provide public housing. And of course, the city and the CRA has partnered with them in different opportunities where we can support the development of new units or the preservation of existing units. And we do collaborate with them very closely, as you know, even from the Orange Avenue Redevelopment Project. But also, there was an item that came before you, your past... Avenue Redevelopment Project. But also, there was an item that came before your past meeting where we are looking for additional grants from HUD to do some repairs and to address lead, do some lead abatement in old homes. And we would partner with the housing authority. Again, if they had units that needed those kinds of repairs, we can leverage resources. So they are a real partner, an ongoing partner. And so to be clear, the public housing, sort of when people say public housing, what they're talking about and what they usually are referencing are those units that are owned or operated by the housing authority, or it is one of their clients that's using a Section 8 voucher in order to rent from a private property. So that distinction, I think, is important. But when it comes to private developer, as Mr. Kay and Mr. Daniels have expressed, the desire to convert a private property into some kind of income-based affordable housing would, would definitely be welcomed. I mean, that would be adding 100 units into what we are currently tracking as income-based. As the manager mentioned, those units right now are not. They are what we would call naturally occurring affordable housing, but they do not have the restriction that a local government or the federal government or the state even would have placed on them. So they are market-based, very much so. I think it would be a great idea for, and it's wonderful to have private developers and investors want to come and approach the city. We can certainly consider all the different incentives that are already available to them through the city and prepare options in that way. And I'm happy to answer any additional questions. I know, I think, Mr. Manager, you mentioned, you, you gave a pretty great overview over there. I think at this point, what we do know is that the investors and the developers through Mr. Kay and Mr. Daniels have made their offer to the sellers. I understand that there's a process that they have to go through over the next couple of days where they might accept that offer or not. But the ownership would, if they're successful, they would be the owners. And I think there will be a lot of opportunities for us to discuss ways that we can partner with them to add this 100 units into our income-based inventory.
Abena, would you be willing to step up to the plate and go ahead and start putting together a list of all of the opportunities that we can help the private owners if they are successful in acquiring this piece of property? All of the benefits of partnering, you know, what, what can we offer? So that when the time comes, if they're successful in the acquisition, there's no time lost, and we can just move forward with, okay, you qualify XYZ, let's, let's execute?
Certainly, with the city manager's direction, I'd be happy to pull together whatever information is, is available. Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, too, and if I might, that, we would include any kind of CRA type.
Right, yeah.
Hey, I don't want to overstep our bounds, but I, I think we're knowledgeable of things that have happened with the CRA. And so, not to be presumptuous, but we would include that as well.
Right. So if they were successful as the private, the new owners, Mr. Kay, Mr. Daniels, I just want to make sure that CRA and the city is in a position to sit down with the programs that we currently have and the resources that we have, be able to say, hey, congratulations, we want to be great community partners. This is what we can bring to the table after, after the acquisition is done.
Absolutely. And, and that is the nature of the conversations we have now when private developers approach us. We love those kinds of conversations because they're, they're coming in with ideas. They, they have skin in the game. They've made the investment. And we lay out all the options for them, whether it's from growth management and permitting related incentives that allow them to quickly renovate or redevelop a property, whether it is, you know, repair loans, where then we put an affordability restriction on there. All those options are very much on the table.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Williams-Cox.
And, and, Abena, if they are not successful, whoever is successful.
Right.
Those opportunities will, will be there for them as well.
That's right.
If they're interested in making these income-based housing.
That's right.
Right. And so once we learn who the new owners are, we're going to welcome them to the community. If it's not Chris and Adam, welcome them to the community and let them know what we are, what our priorities are and how we can assist them if they're interested in doing this, this way.
That's right. We will. We'll be more than happy to do that.
And one of the other things that I, I want to make sure, I want to be clear that I heard this, and I want to make sure the public heard this. Currently, those apartments are not low-income, are not income, low-income or income-based apartments. They're market-rate.
They are, yeah. They are not public housing. They're not designated as such. They do not have any public subsidy that requires them to maintain an income-based rent level or a period of affordability.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. There's a motion on the table still. Commissioner Matlow, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I just want to follow up on that because from, from my understanding, from what I've heard in our discussions, is if the city doesn't take additional action and if that's working out a deal or coming up with an alternative solution for, for acquisition, I don't believe they're able to go through with it without raising rents to market rate. And what people are saying, market rate, right now, they're talking $1,100 a unit, $1,200 a unit, where people right now are paying in the, in the 700s. And that's probably below market rate because the owners have just had it so long and have long-term tenants. It'll be the exact situation that we saw in the Meadows. We could say, you know, they were paying this, now they have to pay market rate of 950. But that doesn't solve the problem that there's people who can't afford that new market rate. And we have more units coming down the pipeline, but in, in a single blow, we're going to see 100 units wiped off of what's affordable. Just like at the Meadows, we saw 100 or so units wiped off of what's affordable. And if we don't come up with an alternative strategy to start protecting what's already affordable, whether it's legally designated or not, what people are actually paying rent day-to-day, and that, that's the, the bigger picture, the bigger issue. It's not each individual unit or property. It's that these are going to keep coming offline and at rates where people can't afford, and there won't be enough replacement. That's my overall point.
Mr. Mayor.
Sure, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Matlow, I, I think that that's an excellent conversation. But what we know is, is there was a brand-new apartment complex built next to the moon on Lafayette. It's a beautiful apartment complex that's income-based. And so we know the rents that they're paying are lower than market. I just mentioned the other one in the Northeast, and the name escapes me. Maybe, maybe Abena can remember.
Plantations at the Pines.
Plantations at the Pines. Thank you. That's, and, and, so these are very nice apartments that, that the rents are not a reflection of the market. And, and you have to qualify. And so the, the real holy grail here in the particular apartment complex we're talking about is to get the owner to agree to make it income-based. That's, that's the threshold, regardless of condition. Now, as I understand it, the condition of these apartments needs to be improved. So whoever buys it, they must improve it. Where, where we would find difficulty is injecting ourselves into a transaction with the seller. The seller, obviously, that's not relevant to the seller. It would be relevant to the buyer. So I think whoever we'd be talking to, we'd be encouraging the buyer to qualify for an income-based status. And we could say, here are the things that you could achieve because there's, there are incentives, lots of federal incentives, and that's how they become affordable. And they work for the owner. It's not a direct subsidy of a local government necessarily. Oftentimes, it's a subsidy of the federal government. And we can certainly map that out. And I think maybe Commissioner Richardson said this, or Commissioner Williams-Cox, if Mr. Daniels and Mr. Kay were not the successful bidder, and we have no way to know that. We can't be part of that process. It's very, very dangerous. In fact, if they've got a process that we come around and we put our thumb on the scale, that's obviously got to play itself out in terms of how that works. So whoever's successful, we could help pave that roadmap. I've got to believe they want to reinvest in these. So they buy them and they fix them up into, into, you know, good condition. You know, how can they make that work? How can they be income-based, not just that the rents are less than elsewhere, but they guarantee and obligate themselves for a long period of time to have income-based rents? I think that would be ultimately the goal. It's very consistent with what the commission has set out for us. And in fact, what we've been able to achieve with, again, 1,900 units, which is the high watermark, what we know is, over the last 50 years, any given year, on average, we were adding 90 new units. And we have 1,900 in the pipe. So we've seen a change. So there, there's things that work, and I think we could help, help facilitate that.
Any other comment? So the motion on the table is to formally instruct the city manager to move forward with negotiations of this particular deal. I am not going to support the motion on the table. I have not had a chance to speak to Mr. Daniels or Mr. Kay one-on-one. I'm not that familiar with, with the transaction at all. And so I'm a little hesitant to move forward. But obviously, Chris, you and I have an incredible working relationship, and we serve on the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee together. And I think you know me well enough to know, let's keep the conversation going. This, this one just doesn't, I don't see how the city fits into this private deal. So I'm going to respectfully vote against the motion. I appreciate your understanding. Any other comment? All right. Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion on the table, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
And it fails 3-2 with, with Commissioner Porter and Matlow in favor, and the mayor, the mayor pro temp, and Commissioner Williams-Cox against. Commissioner Williams-Cox on point?
I, I would, I would in turn offer a different motion that once the transaction is complete, that then the city manager and staff would then work with whoever acquired the property to offer incentives to make it income-based. I would do that.
It's, there's been a motion on table, and a second by the mayor pro temp. And I was actually going to make the same recommendation. I think that we've got some incredible programs between the city and the CRA. And on this particular transaction, once the dust settles and if there is a new owner, that we, we're a little bit more aggressive in our marketing to the new owner of all of the programs that we have available that we can make a positive impact. I think, I think that's, is that the nature of your motion?
That's the nature of my motion.
Okay, excellent. Commissioner Porter.
Thank you. And I'll support the motion. I just, and I hope that we're successful in incentivizing. It's just really, in my experience, not how these things work. The kind of incentives that they would need to make those units affordable, I mean, you're just moving, running around on a spreadsheet. That is how housing developers work, especially if you're from out of town. So I hope that that's successful. But we, I don't even think the city has the resources with the timing of this kind of deal to make that happen. But I'll support it, and I hope, I hope it's successful.
Any other comments?
And I was just going to mention, Mr. Manager, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. You're, really, I represent the commission on the board of the Tallahassee Lenders Consortium, and I certainly will have, make a call to Karen, our executive director, first thing in the morning, and talk to her about how the lenders consortium might be able to be involved in those efforts as well. And they are our housing partner, one of our housing partners.
Right. Commissioner Williams-Cox.
And I, too, serving as your representative to the big, big continuum of care, with, with Abena being our alternate, and the staff that we have working with that organization, make sure that they're in play as well, should this happen, so that we're able to work collectively and collaboratively in our community to make this happen for everyone.
Excellent. All right. Motion's on the table, made by Commissioner Williams-Cox, signed by the mayor pro temp. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously 5-0. Commissioner Matlow, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Also in the news today, another round of federal indictments. For the past four years, we've been talking about much-needed reform to the culture in our local governments. You know, we've been called alarmists. We've been told that everything that's happened in the city was a result of a single individual. But here we are again, likely facing another year-long trial, more revelations about how things have operated within our city. During the last trial, we saw how behind-the-scenes things really operated, how things were revealed. We saw bragging about placing high-level executives, including at Blueprint, including our city manager. We didn't do anything. We didn't change a single thing from those, those revelations. We discovered contracts from vendors that were paying bribes. We didn't take any action. And here we are again. We're going to go through this again. And my question is, I, people always said it was one individual, but I submit, City Hall has never been more dysfunctional than it is today. And I just wonder, in three years, what are we going to be reading about? What are we going to learn about the Doak Campbell deal in three years? What are we going to learn about these no-bid deals? What's going to come out? What's out there? What are we going to learn about how Walani went down? What are we going to learn about the political hand on procurements, the political hand on job hires and raises? And are we just going to let this drag out forever? Or are we ever going to take concrete action to become, to reform our government, to be the open, transparent, and honest government that the people of Tallahassee deserve? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. We've got Commissioner Porter, I believe. You're next in line.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a couple of things. One, for those of you who don't know, I didn't even know we had a Tallahassee soccer club. And, and when I got the email from Allison Ferris about our sponsorship, I went to one of the games, and it was a lot of fun. And I have never hosted my own tailgate, but I thought I would give it a try, and I did. And I'm going to go again this week. And I thought that tickets are only $7, and it was a lot of fun. And so if y'all, anyone who's listening hasn't been, I encourage you to go. I guess it's been around about four years. And there were food trucks. It's at Gene Cox Stadium. So it's a really good time. And I'll be there. And I, it's, it was supposed to be their last home game, but I think there's going to be another game next Wednesday. So just FYI. I did want to share, I had a meeting with a woman who hosted a, the Tally Bike Fest, the inaugural Tally Bike Fest, and they're trying to host another one. And she just asked me to share some of their successes. They had over, it was at Railroad Square, and it, they had over 2,500 visitors, most of which were from out of town, and 40% of which were women and people of color. And when I say bikes, I'm literally talking about motorcycles. And so it's a woman of color who hosted it, and she's planning to host it again this, I guess, this following year. But I told her that I would give her a shout out because that's something that's really cool, that we haven't seen before in our community, and that was a huge success, bringing a lot of tourism to our, to our area. And then I just had two other questions. One was, are we having the, I see on our schedule, the July 13th tentative budget workshop? Is that, do we know yet if that is going to be scheduled and, and held, or is it still tentative?
Commissioner, I don't know the answer to that. Let me, let me circle back around. We will present a recommended budget for July 13th. I think it's possible that you could incorporate that into your city commission. You have a city commission meeting that same day. And, and so I'm, I'm not sure if you need the separate workshop.
Okay.
But, but I will check and respond back to you.
Okay. And part of the reason I'm asking, and I know that the $1 million for gun violence prevention has already been appropriated, but I'm, like all of us, I'm sure, getting questions about how that money's going to be spent and whether we've made any progress on the staff level of, you know, ideas. And so that was really where I was getting at with my question, was whether we, when we should expect that conversation to continue. So I'm not necessarily making a motion, but I was just curious if, if we were to have that workshop, if that would be discussed then. So you can just get back.
Okay.
To me on that. And then finally, I wanted to, we had a robust discussion last week at our joint planning hearing between the city and the county. And there was, I don't, I did not see if the, if anyone from the county made any motion or whether a motion here is required. But there was discussion about some kind of joint workshop with the city and county to review our growth management practices or policies that, you know, a refresher for the community and for commissioners about the stages of development when we're making certain decisions and whether we wanted to make any changes. So I don't know if there's interest here to direct the city manager to speak to the county about if that's something we want to county about if that's something we want to schedule for the fall or, but there seemed to be interest at that meeting or something like that. And so I did want, if a motion is appropriate, to make a motion to direct the city manager to reach out to the county, to, to see if there was interest to schedule something like that.
Second?
All right, so there's a motion on the table to ask the city manager to reach out to the county administrator, see if there's any interest in a joint workshop on the policies and procedures of comprehensive plan process?
Yes.
Okay. To schedule in the near future. Motion and second by Commissioner Matlow. Let's open it up for a comment. Commissioner Williams-Cox?
Question. I was at that meeting, I do remember the discussion, but we have an established process. We have an established policy.
Right.
I think that where we are is that citizens may not be aware of what the process is. And I've had this conversation even with our internal folks about knowing that when, how this, how this thing, what the steps are to get there. You know, when someone comes in and starts talking, they're not going out to build something the next day, but there are steps along the way where things need to happen. So I can agree that we need to document the process in layman's terms so that the public understands how, how it works. But I think that the conversation was also going to making some potential policy changes because the county found themselves bound by the policy to do something other than what they had a desire to do. And so, and then that's where the conversation came about having a joint meeting. I think before we agreed to do a joint meeting, we need to make sure that residents know what the, what the process is, what the steps are, what the, you know, already, you know, we've had this conversation about, and Karen. The public needs to know. You know, we have the benefit of being able to get this information, but they need to know. And so that when we have, if we have a joint meeting, we know where the gaps are based on what the public has said to us, once we've made, put it in layman's terms. So my point is, before we move down the road to a joint meeting, let's document the process in such a way that we can figure out where the problem is, where the glitches are, and where there might be a need to change policy. Because that's, that's what I remember happened at the joint meeting, that there was, county had, there were some policies that they couldn't get around because that was the policy. So that's what, that's what I would recommend we do before we do a joint meeting.
Commissioner Porter on point?
Thank you. I mean, I don't see why we can't do both. I think the policy is actually pretty well documented. We can't force people to read it. There are certain things that are legally required of us, and then there are certain things that we can change if we, as the commission, or we as, you know, joint city and county planning board decide to. So that was where I saw the conversation, and what I, I would like to see as a first step is reviewing that and then having an understanding and a conversation amongst ourselves about what we legally can do if we want to, to make that process work better, if it can, not only for, of course, the residents, but also for commissioners who are bound by certain legal requirements when we are making those decisions.
All right, there's a motion on the table by Commissioner Porter, seconded by Commissioner Matlow, to propose a joint workshop with the county. Commissioner Porter, I'm going to respectfully vote against it. I don't see the need to have a joint workshop with the county. Much of the comprehensive plan process is actually dictated by state statute, not by, and I'm looking at Artie for nod of the head. So if they want to change the process, I encourage our colleagues over at the county to go talk to our state representatives and our state senator, which would have to take legislative action on the state level, I believe, not for us. So with that, I'm comfortable where we are, and let's go ahead and call Commissioner Porter.
And I respect that, but we, we can make changes to our comprehensive plan. That is our responsibility and our role. I understand the role of the state, but we do control our comprehensive plan in, with the considerable amount of, of power.
I understand.
Okay.
Let me rephrase my comments. I'm comfortable with the plan that we have. We can continue the dialogue, and we might tweak it here and there. What I sensed, now, I wasn't in the room participating, I was participating by phone. I sensed some frustration from our, from our colleagues from the county that were on the short side of a political vote. They'd also been on the commission for over 12 years, so there's been plenty of time to change this process if that was truly what the interest was. I just kind of took it as a political ploy in the moment. So I'm comfortable where we are. I love the suggestion. I do think that the county should have a town hall meeting and educate the citizens on the comprehensive plan process. I don't, I don't see anything wrong with that, but I don't see necessarily the need for a joint meeting before the city commission and the county commission. Oh, yes, ma'am. Commissioner Porter?
Thank you. I understand where this is going. I just would want all of us to think about whether we really think the process that we have is working for the community, when we see how many times residents come to us unhappy with what is legally allowed to happen in their own backyard. Neighborhoods that are changing, neighborhoods whose entire character and history are being wiped away, and we are powerless because of our current comprehensive plan. So I don't, I clearly don't think it's working. I have not been here for 12 years. This is my attempt to meet the calls that I hear from our residents, to review and reform certain aspects of our plan. I don't think it was purely political, but that's all I have to say.
Okay. Commissioner Matlow, then the mayor pro tem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I was in the room, and I thought there was a lot of consensus from people on both sides of that particular vote that wanted to see us really having a deep dive discussion about how we want to grow as a community. You know, there's a lot of questions about this continued push for urban sprawl, which we know costs taxpayers a lot more money in the long run and limits the amount of resources we have available to invest in our current neighborhoods and the places that are needed the most. So is it, is it appropriate for elected officials that oversee the comp plan to actually have a discussion? Do we want to continue to push for urban sprawl? Or do we want to look at changes that could be made to develop responsibly within our current boundaries, to add density? I understand, Mr. Mayor, respectfully, if your position is, we don't want to engage our, our current neighbors, we don't want to engage the neighborhoods who live here, we don't want them to be part of our planning process, but I can't support that. I think we need to.
That's actually not, not at all what I said. What I said was, we don't need a joint meeting with the county commissioners. What we should do is have a town hall meeting countywide and include the public to come in to have this conversation. So I do agree with you on that, and that's actually what I just said. So I don't necessarily think we need to have a joint workshop between city and county. We should have a town hall meeting, and it should be held by the county, so it's countywide, so all the residents of Leon County have the opportunity to participate.
I respectfully disagree. As elected bodies, we'd have to take action to move in any different direction how we're currently, I mean, the vote will be what it is, but if we are really serious about examining the way we're growing, if we're really serious about examining how we invest in public infrastructure, what type of transportation we're providing, how much resources we're wasting by perpetuating 90-style urban sprawl, which, which by the way, doesn't add to, enough to the tax revenues to even repair the current facilities that are falling apart. If that were true, there wouldn't be current facilities falling apart. What we see is we continue to direct public resources to new developments or areas that don't need them. I think that's a worthwhile conversation. I think the county should, should, should be a part of it. And yes, I want to hear from the public, but I also want to hear from my colleagues. I want to know who's serious about making the changes we need to have a comprehensive plan that speaks to the needs of the people that need investment the most. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor pro tem?
Well, you know, I, Commissioner Matlow, I have to disagree with you. I, I mean, I don't know of anyone on either body that's pushing for urban sprawl. I haven't heard that conversation at all. What I've heard is our staff give a comprehensive review on what our growth needs will be in, into the short-term and long-term future. That includes extending the urban services area so that we have the housing that can accommodate that kind of growth. I'm certainly not, I don't know that anybody wants us to just, well, I won't say anybody. I can only speak for myself. But I haven't heard any conversation where there's anybody out there just actively pushing for unbridled growth in this community. We all want the growth to happen. We know it's going to happen, and it's got to happen responsibly. And that's what I heard in the conversations that we had at these last few comprehensive plan meetings, that that's the direction that we're headed. When development occurs, the developers are required to pay for their own infrastructure. So we're not taking money from one part of town and giving it to the other when we approve new developments. That is not the case. They are responsible for, for putting the bill for their own infrastructure. And we are taking care, right now, we're looking at improving sidewalks throughout the community and repairing and repaving roads. So that's kind of where I saw us headed in the conversations that we were having. Not that anyone was not interested in growth or was pushing unbridled growth in this community, but accepting the fact that we are going to grow, and how do we do that responsibly? And certainly, the developers will play a role in that if they choose to develop in our community. And so I would certainly want to have the community more involved. I did hear some people say they wanted to have a better understanding of how that process works. I think, you know, Artie is shaking his head that, you know, the process is pretty much dictated by what the state tells us we can do and how we can do it. And so if we want to change that, again, we would have to make that a part of our legislative platform and present that to our local delegation to then take to the legislature. But in terms of informing the community about the process and how they can be involved, I'm 100% for that. And I think that that's what I heard during the conversation that we had during that process, that people want to know how, what's going to happen, how is it going to impact their neighborhoods, given the process that we have currently. Changing the comprehensive plan, you know, if there are suggestions for that, then it would have to go through that same vetting process. And we would, as a joint body, would have to approve those proposed changes if it was the will of that body. And so that's, that's kind of where I see us at this point. And I think both bodies, we can do it, you know, individually, we can do it as a joint body, have these town hall meetings so that we can have staff explain that process to the community and how they can be more involved when future issues like this come before us. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Porter has a motion on the table for a joint workshop, seconded by Commissioner Matlow. Commissioner Williams-Cox, you have the floor?
I would like to offer a friendly amendment, if Commissioner Porter will entertain it, that the county do hold a county-wide town hall meeting, providing the documented process of, in layman's terms, how, how the process works. And then following that, I would, I would be happy to have a joint meeting, but what I see happening is us having a joint meeting without the benefit of taking it out to the community, we're just talking in an echo chamber, and we need to be talking to the people who are going to be impacted by it. So I would offer that amendment, that if the county would host a town hall meeting to share the process, the documented process in layman's terms, then I could get with doing a joint meeting after that occurs.
So there's a subsequent motion on the table for...
A friendly amendment.
Oh, a friendly, friendly amendment. Do you, do you accept that friendly amendment, Commissioner Porter?
I accept the amendment, I guess, as the, the motion to ask the county, because we can't, you know, tell the county to do that. But if it's, so, yeah, I assume that's what you mean, then sure.
Good. All those in favor of the motion, Commissioner Matlow?
I'm the second to the motion, just want to clarify. So the county agrees to host a town hall, after the town hall, we're giving direction to schedule a joint workshop to discuss?
I would be open to having a joint meeting to discuss what we learned from the public after that town hall meeting.
Okay. All those in favor of the amended motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously 5-0. Commissioner Porter, you still have the floor?
That is all for me. Thank you.
Great. Mayor pro tem?
I don't have any.
All right, I got three things, and we're out of here, all happy. First of all, congratulations to FSU track and field athlete Trey Cunningham for winning the national championship. I don't know if y'all were paying attention, he finished first in the 100-meter hurdles, logging in at 13 seconds, just seconds under, breaking the collegiate record. And he was also named the Men's Outdoor National Athlete of the Year by Track and Field News. I think that we should invite him to Chambers to celebrate, if not at the July meeting, maybe during the fall semester. What a tremendous athlete and what a great accomplishment. Also want to send congratulations to the 2022 Special Olympics gold medal winner, Ian Kelly. We saw that in the paper. He graduated from Charles and from TCC, and he captured gold in golf as a member of Team Florida. And I would like to invite Mr. Kelly to Chambers as well for a celebration. And finally, the Charles Timber Wolf United Soccer Team also took home the gold medal at this year's Special Olympics. I think all three of them are worthy, all three individuals and groups of bringing in to Chambers and to celebrate, as we do with proclamation. So if you don't mind, I would like to make a motion, one motion, that we bring all three in to Chambers when appropriate, either at the July meeting or after break, to celebrate their accomplishments. Is there a second to the motion?
Whoa, 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 hold on, Mr. Mayor. Make sure we do this correctly. You can't make the motion and carry it at the same time.
Actually, I can make the motion, can I?
Yes, he's using the rules for small committees.
That's right.
What rule was that again?
Rule for small committees under Roberts rules.
Don't you remember this was part of our greater discussion on the Roberts rules?
All righty then.
We're following to the tee. I am actually allowed to make the motion, so.
All righty then.
Hey, they're bigger motions you can challenge me on than this one.
I know, I know. I'm for this one 100%.
All right, seconded by, by the mayor pro tem. There we go. But I appreciate everyone else jumping in the second as well. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes unanimously 5-0. Everybody have a wonderful evening. We stand adjourned.